We're going to go ahead now and we're going to call this meeting of the Natchez Mayor and Board of Aldermen to order. At this time, we would ask everyone to please stand. Reverend Jim Sanders is going to offer our prayer today. I also want to say, just as an announcement, that this is our first official meeting since the passing of our community liaison Francis Wallace. And so, we would like during our prayer to offer a moment of silence for Ms. Wallace and for the loss that we as a community have experienced. Reverend Sanders, thank you for being here this morning. We'll invite you up for the prayer.
Go bow for a moment. Let us pray. Good morning, Mayor and Board.
Good morning.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, first of all, for your son, Jesus, that provides our salvation and makes our life worth living. Lord, I just pray to a merciful and a mighty God that you sent your son to heal our broken lives. And, Lord, we praise you today for all of the things that you've done for our community during Hurricane Ida. Lord, that you spared, once again, the devastation for our town. Lord, and we praise you for that. We thank you, Lord, that you send healing in doctors and nurses, that you bless us with technology and medicine. And, Lord, we claim your promises of wholeness. And we pray for those that are ill in body and mind today, and for those who long for a healing touch. Lord, we pray that you will make the weak strong, the sick healthy, and the broken whole, and that you will confirm those who serve them as agents of your love. Then all shall be renewed in vigor to point to the risen Christ, who conquered death, that we might live eternally. We pray that you will bless them, Mayor and our Board, as they seek wisdom. Lord, we thank you for Christian leaders, and we know that Scripture tells us that wisdom comes from you.
Yes, Lord.
And we pray today for that wisdom, Lord, in decision-making, and it is in the holy name of Jesus that all for this prayer. Amen.
Amen. And let us continue. A few moments of reverence for Ms. Francis Wallace. And, Father, we thank you for Francis, and we ask your comfort upon her family and her friends and her community. Amen.
Amen.
Now, please join with me as we salute our flag and repeat together our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Yes, sir. Alderwoman Hall, here. Alderman Frazier. Alderman Smith, here. Alderwoman Irving, here. Alderman Davis. Alderman Diller, here. You have a phone call.
I believe Alderman Davis is present on the phone.
Yeah, and Alderman Frazier's here also.
And Alderman Frazier was here. We'll expect him to be back in a minute.
Yes, sir.
All right. Great. Glad to see everyone. We do have a special presentation this morning. I'm going to come down front for this. I'm going to ask Ms. Sabrina Bartley to join me, and any member of the first act who might have a today. Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you very much.
Well, are we surprising you?
I think you are.
And join us. We did have an organization. While they're making their way here, in fact, we'll allow this organization to introduce themselves to you and why today is important to them, to us, to the city of Natchez. And we'll just, and we'll just start with you.
I'm the Attorney, State President of the National Council of Negro Women. How did you get to Natchez County? Lilian Clark Edney.
I'm Dr. Benjamin Moore.
Jacqueline Williams, President of the Natchez Section of the National Council of Negro Women.
I would also like any of our Aldermen, Alderwomen who would like to join us to please come and join us here as we make this presentation. Our city clerk, our city attorney, you are all welcome. We are about to make a very special presentation. And I'm going to preface this by saying that I learned a long time ago to recognize talent and to be grateful for talent. When it comes your way, when you come across it, we have amazing talent in this lady, Sabrina Bartley. And one of the proudest achievements of former Mayor Butch Brown, he told me this with his own words, is that he gave this young lady a chance, and she has proven to be a fantastic public servant for the city of Natchez and an example of an African-American pioneer in our midst. So, we want today to present a key to the city, to Ms. Sabrina Goins Bartley. Under the authority vested in me by the city of Natchez and in my official capacity as Mayor of the city of Natchez, I, Dan M. Gibson, do present the key to the city to Sabrina Goins Bartley. Whereas Sabrina Goins Bartley is a visionary, transformational leader who has positively impacted the lives of hundreds and perhaps thousands through a daily standard of Christian service through her leadership positions in both secular and sacred platforms. And whereas in 2000, Mrs. Bartley became the first African-American woman appointed Department Director in the city of Natchez by former Mayor Butch Brown. And whereas Mrs. Bartley has received an abundance of awards across the years for her community and humanistic efforts. She is recognized nationally, regionally, and throughout the state by others as a proven leader. Most recently, she received the coveted Charles Carr Leadership Award for Transportation Leaders, Statewide Transportation Director of the Year 2016 by the Mississippi Public Transit Association, 50 Leading Businesswomen in Mississippi by the Mississippi Business Journal, Businesswoman of the Year by the Natchez Business and Civic League, the NAACP Community Service Award, the Natchez Mississippi Chapter of the Links She-Persisted Award, and the Natchez Senior Community Woman of Distinction Award. Whereas in December 2016, Reverend Sabrina Bartley became the first woman pastor in the 166-year history of the historic Poplar Hill AME Church in Fayette, Mississippi. And whereas Reverend Bartley obtained a Bachelor's in Management and a Master of Public Administration Valhavn University, Masters of Divinity Andersonville Theological Seminary, and is currently -- my glasses are messing me up, Sabrina -- and is currently a EDD candidate in organizational leadership with an emphasis in Christian ministry at Grand Canyon University. She lends her time to the South Mississippi Conference Women in Ministry, AMEWIM, Natchez Mississippi Chapter of the Links Incorporated, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Zeta Delta Omega Chapter, Mississippi Public Transit Association Incorporated, Natchez Adams County Council on Aging, Community Transit Association of America, Alcorn State University Social Workers' Advisory Board, American Society of Public Administrators, and NAACP Natchez Chapter. I'm out of breath just reading this, Sabrina. And whereas Mrs. Bartley is loved and cherished by her husband Reverend Charles E. Bartley, their five adult children, and their spouses, ten wonderful children, and a grand cat named Favor. Now, therefore, I, Dan M. Gibson, Mayor of the city of Natchez, and on behalf of the Board of Aldermen and the city of Natchez, do hereby honor Sabrina Goins Bartley. Now, therefore, I adhere unto, set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed, this, the fourteenth day of September in the year of our Lord, 2021. We've got to get another picture here. I want that mine off to somebody.
When are you asleep?
Let me, let me hold it with you. There we go, everyone.
Ready? One, two, three.
Do you want to say anything?
First thing. First thing, I want to thank you, Mayor, for, and all of those who were a part of this -- I don't even know what to say about that. I heard you say a second ago that these ladies were the catalyst behind this. Recently, I received the Cloud of Thun Award. Did I say it right? From this wonderful association of the Natchez Chapter Negro Women several weeks ago. And I was just floored, and I was so excited, and I was so honored, and I felt so humbled. Now, to be alive and receive a key to the city that I never thought would have happened has truly taken me out of my comfort zone. I feel like going over there and getting my handkerchief that I carry all of the time because I am just elated. But what I do want to say is that each day I have been blessed. I made my way to Natchez, Mississippi by way of my husband and Reverend Charles Bartley, who at that time was pastoring Zion Chapel here. And I found myself into this community without friends or family. But I did find friends and family in the church and in the community and at the city of Natchez where I began my employment here. Those persons are still my friends and my family. I find that from the day that I walked into City Hall in 1919, that every day I had the opportunity to make a difference in the lives of other individuals. I realize that I am truly a transformational and a servant leader because I believe that God is first. But I think if you do not make a difference in the communities in which you serve when God places you in a position to do so, then you have not achieved what your purpose is or His purpose is for you. So, while I -- so much thank you for this opportunity. I am so grateful to God that over these last 20-plus years, we fed thousands, we transported thousands and thousands, we brought economic development into this community. And the fact that others see that is not something I strive for, but I am just grateful that they see the Christ in me as I continue to try to serve others. So, to all of you, I thank you all so very much, and I appreciate you. To you, Mayor Gibson, I thank you so much for your leadership, and I thank you so much for this opportunity. To the audience and to those who are looking and listening, and to my friends and family from afar, those families by choice and those families that we are born into, I love you and I thank God for you. As I continue to reach up to God, I continue to reach after you. May God bless you.
Right here, you ladies come down in front.
The Natchez Section of the National Council of Negro Women Incorporated, this was our recognition award. It was presented to you, Reverend Sabrina Goins Bartley, earlier this year. It was our second annual Thun Heights Recognition Program. Mrs. Jacqueline Williams is our president, and I, Lilian Clark Edney, was a program chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, now, thank you all so much.
God bless you.
Thank you.
And love you.
Boy, look at that. Key to the city.
While our Aldermen, all the women are getting back in place, I want to stay right here because I have someone I'd like to interview. We lost a jewel, and I will never forget the Friday evening when I found out that the Lord had called Francis home. And we've been struggling to just imagine how we could fill her shoes. For a period of time, she had already done so much. But there is a young lady in our community that I want to know and appreciate and admire who has so many talents and has given so much to our community already. Many of you already know her as the community liaison for the purposes of emergency management. And she has proven herself well in that, which is mostly a volunteer position. And I had the pleasure of interviewing her and discussing with her a future with Natchez. And today, I'd like to announce that our choice for the new community liaison for the office of the mayor is Nifa Hardy. And this Hardy, we just. And I want to say also, Nifa, we had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Robert Bradford earlier this morning, who is the Director of Emergency Management for Adams County. And we have worked so well together. And there have been so many times that I've wanted to see the community liaison work more and more in that role with the county in assisting in times of emergency. It's not that that happens, thank goodness, every day, but when it happens, you know, the city, the county, support our community to come together. And so, I asked Mr. Bradford, I said, you know, I know Nifa is mostly a volunteer for you and doesn't work all that much, but only mainly in times of crisis. Would it be all right if you shared her with us and the city? And he said he thought that was a win-win, and we know it's a win-win.
Absolutely.
And Nifa and I have already been going over all of our plans that include so many things in our community, to better serve all of our community, to highlight all of those positive things happening, the community organizations, what's happening in our schools, and then also the steps we're making toward a better telling of our history, the steps we're taking toward unity, toward diversity. We talked about the historic sites for African-American history and our desire to see those better marked. We also talked about the U.S. Color Truce Monument that Mr. Robert Purnell is working so hard with his committee to make happen. And what I have seen through all of this is that Nifa Hardy shares my passion and vision for the future of Natchez. So, Nifa, welcome aboard, and congratulations.
I just want to thank you guys and ladies for the opportunity. I mean, I know I have huge shoes to fill. I was certainly saddened by Francis' passing. And I spoke with her, you know, hours or so before her passing. So, I mean, I'm struggling, still deeply saddened, you know, by her passing, and it's certainly very emotional for me. But I have big shoes to fill, and I hope I make all of you proud.
You will.
And then Nifa is willing to visit with us during the executive session later today as we discuss personnel matters because I do want y'all to have an opportunity to visit with her. And also, I just have to say, it's really poetic, in a sad way, it's something I'll never forget, but I had gotten a call from Nifa on a Friday evening, I think it was a little after six. And Ida was approaching, and she was looking for Francis, and I'd just called for Francis earlier in the day. And she was calling me. I said, I don't know, let me get in touch with her. And then the phone interrupts, and I hang up with Nifa to answer a call from our police chief. And it's then that I learned, you know, that Francis had passed away. And so, that's poetic in a sense, and it just shows Francis' commitment to Natchez, and it also shows Nifa's commitment to our community. And that there that evening, first and foremost on her mind was the safety of our citizens. Thank you, Nifa.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hardy, this is nothing personal against you, but I don't know if the other board members was informed of Ms. Hardy. This is my first time hearing about it, and as I stated before, something like this happened. I liked to be aware of it, and I wasn't aware of it. But like I said, it's nothing personal.
Thank you. Well, that's why we're bringing her to the executive committee meeting this afternoon. But I will say, this is an appointment of the mayor, and it's a pleasure to announce this appointment today. Nifa, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Before we go to approval of minutes, there's one other item that I would like to go ahead and move to the front of the agenda, and it's because it is so important. Today, we are going to make a very important announcement, and it is with regard to workforce education in Natchez-Adams County. If you will recall, a year or more ago during the campaign, it was on the minds of everyone. It was discussed in every forum that we need job training in a big way in Natchez-Adams County. Well, since then, we've been working very hard on this. Early on, we had a vision that this would be something that could be housed at the tire plant. And if you'll recall, quite a number of months ago, we announced that we were successful in getting the Brownfield grant that is starting the process of documenting all of the hazardous sites, possibly in our city, the tire plant being number one, in my opinion. And we now are not only working in a progression toward that, but we are also working in a progression toward possibly having industrial prospects for that site. So, it was determined that we should look for another site. And you may recall, several months ago, we announced that we had been discussing with the county and the school board the site of the Steckler Building, which is on the campus of Natchez High School. It had been brought to our attention that those programs are working best when it's made easier for the high school kids and even junior high, middle school kids to be able to go and even co-enroll in workforce development programs right there on the school campus. Also, during this time, we had numerous meetings, our task force met, assessments were done. And what we determined was that we have a lot of good programs going in our community at Colin, Alcorn, Wind Job Center, the Fallon Center. And yet, there is no cohesive approach to this, and it is very important that we have a fully organized approach in our city-county teamwork approach to workforce development. We also learned of a leading center being developed in the state in Batesville through the Panola Partnership. And we are showing here where we actually had representatives of the city and the county and the school board. You'll see there various people from, including Mr. Amos James, President of the School Board, including other officials with the schools, Cleveland Moore, Mr. Jackson from the high school, the principal there. You'll also see Supervisor Hutchinson, Supervisor Angela Hutchins from Adams County, Supervisor Ricky Gray was there, Alderwoman Valencia Hall made the trip, others representing the Chamber, representing Natchez Inc. And what we learned is that this is on the forefront in the state because the city, the county, the schools, and the community college, we met with the President Hindle of Northwest Community College, they've all teamed up. In only three years, they have managed to pull at the local level five million in funds. They've been able to get that match at the state level, another five million, another five million at the federal level. In just three years, they've raised 15 million for what is now on its way to becoming the greatest job training center in the state. They just opened the first phase at an old outlet mall. Some of you may remember the outlet mall in Batesville. And it is now home to the newest facility in biodiesel technology, and we toured that site back in May. We met with all of the leaders there, from the mayor to the economic development officials, and even to include state senators, officials from the school board there in Panola County, and even the community college. What we came back with was an understanding that this could be done here. But in order for it to be done, we have to have a unified approach, and we have to have a leader. We have to have someone with the experience and the passion to head this up. So, over the last few weeks, we've been looking for that leader. We've been having some discussions with various people who are in the know, and we are excited when we can find local talent at home. And we have found that talent. So, I am making an announcement today that still has to have approval through this board, still would have to go before the Board of Supervisors and have their approval. I discussed this with President Angela Hutchins. We even discussed it this morning. And over a visit at breakfast just last week, where also Superintendent, I'm sorry, Superintendent of Education Fred Butcher was there, we discussed this with Chandler Russ at Natchez Inc. And what we've come up with is that we've got a person in our community who can lead this effort, who can be a Director of Workforce Development for Natchez-Adams County. And just as has been done in Batesville, we can begin planning for a major job training center here. Before I announce who that is, I also want to give a report from just a month ago, the very day that we had the announcement that the Eola Hotel would be renovated. We went to Jackson that afternoon, and President Angela Hutchins, and may I say, I love working with the Board of Supervisors, last year, loved working with President Ricky Gray when he was president, have enjoyed a great relationship working with Angela Hutchins. So, President Hutchins and I were in Jackson just a month ago, meeting with the governor and Chandler Russ, the top officials for economic development for the state of Mississippi, and the top officials and their attorneys from Velocis. Velocis stands to be the largest biorefinery in America, $1.5 billion project scheduled to break ground here in 2023. And the governor's office gave us these instructions, said, jobs are coming, you better prepare now. When the job is there, they don't have time to wait for you to train. You have to start that training now. We also have learned that through the governor's office, the Mississippi Development Authority, Natchez, just Friday, was named, a Friday week ago, was named one of the fastest-growing economies in Mississippi. It was also shared with us that even without this job training strategy in place, we are It was also shared with us that even without this job training strategy in place, we are now tied with another community in Mississippi in terms of projects being worked through the Mississippi Development Authority. And do you know what other community that is that we're tied with? Batesville. Even without job training, we are already, and we have job training, but we don't have it on the scale Batesville has, yet we are already tied with them in terms of projects. Can you imagine where we're going to be once we get this job training going in a big way? Now, the way they've done it in Batesville is the city and the county did bonds. They actually issued bonds to fund this. And then that was matched state and federal, and guess who was their lobbyist, their consultant, who has helped them from day one to do this? Manning McPhillips. Does that name ring a bell? Manning McPhillips happens to be the lobbyist, along with Greg Harper, for the city of Natchez and for Adams County. And so Manning has offered to help us, just as he has helped them, to duplicate what they've done here, but in our own way. And yes, in a smaller way. So the Steckler Building, the school is ready to devote it to this purpose. We have ARP funds coming to us. And in the spring, if you'll recall, Lieutenant Governor Delbert Housman gave us these wise words of advice. Be very careful how you invest these ARP funds. Do not spend them on something just for today, but invest them for the future generations. It is our understanding that because of COVID, many of the opportunities we are experiencing, population growth, job growth, because we are having opportunities come here because they are leaving other areas of the country, loss prevention, case in point. It is creating a challenge because we currently have a surplus of jobs, and our economy is growing faster than the job force and the trained workforce to fill those jobs. And so because of that, we believe that an investment in the future of ARP funds, we may never have this opportunity again, is a wise decision. $1 million, if we dedicate $1 million of our 3.7 from the city, that $1 million by spring could become $2 million because we then could go to Delbert Housman and the governor and all those others who want us to do workforce development, say, we're investing a million, why don't y'all match us? And if the county will do the same thing with their ARP funds, match that. If the school district will do the same with their ARP funds, match that. We could have by the end of the year, a commitment from these three entities, the Board of Alderman and the mayor, the city of Natchez, the Board of Supervisors, Adams County, and the Board of Education for Adams County, Natchez-Adams County School District, we could have $3 million, and then by spring in the legislature, have another $3 million matched. And by this time next year, we could be sitting on $6 million of building and a plan for true workforce development. Just this morning, I've already talked to Dr. Sandra Barnes, Vice President at Colin, she's excited. Just a few minutes ago, I talked to Executive Vice President for Colin, his name is Dewayne Middleton, he's excited. He will be here next week, and we're having a meeting. Just two weeks ago, we had a meeting with President Felicia Nave at Alcorn, mainly to talk about medical opportunities and Velocis. She is actually someone with a chemistry background, and she is excited about the opportunities we have to build biorefinery chemistry jobs right here in our city and county in our region. So all this to say, the timing's right. I would like for us to quickly move toward an interlocal agreement, and I would like for us today to throw that invitation out officially to the Board of Supervisors and to the school district to partner with us in what we believe will be a historic step forward. We want jobs. We want industry. Let's make sure we have the trained workforce to meet the demand of those jobs, that industry. And so who is the mystery lady? We're making no secret of this. We believe Tawana Williams, who currently serves our community at Colin and at Wind Job Center, is a natural. Tawana has been active in our task force on workforce development. She has for many years worked in this area. She's also a U.S. veteran. She's also, in addition to that, she is someone with great education, her MBA, she's a mother, she's a friend, she knows Natchez, and she knows what it will take to get people matched with businesses, and to actually work hand-in-hand with Natchez, Inc., with the city, with the school, with the county, with Colin, with Alcorn, the Fallon Center, and to be that hub that brings it all together. It's a tall order, but Tawana, I really think you can fill it. And I'm just getting her name out there because I believe that much in her. And so I want to introduce Tawana Williams to you now and ask Ms. Williams, if she would, to come and just share a little of her vision for workforce development. And while she's coming, I want to emphasize the reason it's important that we make this decision now and quickly is because opportunity's coming. We've got to get ready. It's already at our doorstep. And without a leader who gets up every day passionate about this, working full-time for this, it won't happen. I can believe in it all day long, but the mayor's got a lot of responsibilities. Chandler Russ can believe in it all day long, but he's got a lot of responsibilities. And we know how busy they are in the county, the school, and our community colleges in Alcorn. So Tawana, all eyes are on you.
Very good.
No pressure.
Good morning, Board of Alderman. Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you all for having me. I've prepared just a little something because I didn't want to miss anything. In my consulting with the mayor about workforce, I shared with him my love for workforce and what it means. And at the end of the day, it is simply creating economic prosperity for individuals, businesses, and communities. I have personally spent my entire career working to achieve economic prosperities in our communities. People are our most prized possession, and in this equation, we must invest in people to ensure thriving community. The Workforce Technical Center would be an ideal solution to help answer the workforce needs of our businesses. The business sector is growing in leaps and bounds in Natchez-Adams County, and in order to keep that momentum, we want to be able to commit to our employers that we have a well-trained workforce, ready to do the job. I understand that workforce means something different to each entity involved. Our educators, for example, often focus on securing self-sufficiency for individuals, and that can mean helping them secure more than a livable wage. We understand that livable wage is very important. Economic developers, they tend to focus on securing business in the region, and of course, they need to do that to sustain economic security. While employers' focus is to maintain a skilled workforce that can remain competitive in the region and globally. I believe the Workforce Technical Center is our answer to the call for each of these invested entities. I just wanted to share a little bit of that with you guys. I know you all don't all know me, but most of you probably do. I have definitely spent all of my career, with the exception of the four years active duty military, in serving our communities in terms of economic prosperity. I call myself a anti-poverty advocate. I don't like poverty. I don't think that it's okay to work on a job eight, 10, 12 hours, and you're still unable to pay a mortgage to feed your family, to ensure that your children have a great education. So for me, it's very, very personal. And so I have talked to the mayor about this, and I got so excited about the fact that we have an opportunity now to connect all of these wheels, our individuals, our businesses, and our communities. And we can do that, of course, through Natchez, Inc., our economic developer, through the city, through our Board of Supervisors, through our educators, our Colin, our Alcorns. So thank you guys just for considering me.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And we will have, you know, more meetings, but I want to also say this, a couple of things. The $6 million is just a start. It's going to be important that we get employer buy-in, and this is worth money to our employers because they need this workforce. So we're hoping that the employers, industries, and those coming into our area will help us financially with this effort. That's what they're doing in Batesville. The other thing is, we're going to need more help from the legislature. This won't just be our first ask in 2022. There will be other asks to come. And one thing I am so impressed about is that Tawana Williams has expertise, also having lobbied in the past and having worked with state representatives and senators. They know her already. And then the third thing, Ms. Williams is a grant writer. And we understand that because of the pandemic and because of the emphasis on workforce development, that we're going to have federal grants being made available in the very near future. We must be poised, as a community, to get every grant we can and bring it here to Natchez-Adams County.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Smith, yes?
I think, Mr. Mayor, this is a great opportunity to go ahead and move forward with an interlocal agreement between the city of Natchez, the county of Adams, and Adams County School District to move forward with workforce development projects.
Second?
Mr. Mayor.
We're going to entertain a motion, and then we'll have discussion. Are you making that as a motion?
No, Mr. Mayor, let's make a discussion.
We wouldn't have the interlocal agreement yet, but we're just asking that we would move forward. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith to move forward in discussions toward an interlocal agreement. That motion has been seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Now, discussion. Alderman Frazier, I recognize you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I understand about the workforce development, and I'm not against the workforce development, but here's the thing, it is, that's a lot of information that you gave us to digest, considering what I heard, for us to take in. But here's the thing, if we're going to do this, my opinion is that we should get together, not just with the board, every board member here, every supervisor, we need to get together, and every member on the Natchez-Adams County School District, we need to get together in a joint meeting and discuss this, and see which way that we can go and who we're going to put the funds. From what I can understand right now, that the Board of Supervisors, you said that you talked to Ms. Hutchinson. I understand that too, but from my understanding, the rest of the Board of Supervisors don't have an inkling of what's going on in this. They don't know anything about this. So, and I don't know if they're going to vote on this or what. It's not that we're just going on, we're going on and moving forward. We really don't know what the other participants are going to do. They might not even want to fund this. They might not even want to go along with this. But I think before we do this, make a vote on this, appointing somebody, or doing workforce thing, I think that overall, everyone in the county, the city who's involved, need to get together and discuss this as one joint, as one joint session. Because I hate to sit up here and vote on something, then we don't have, the county that put their money up, and the school board that put their money up, because if they don't have it, or something's going to happen. I understand you say about ARP money, but the county may not want to spend their money on something, and the school does. So that's just my, that's just my basic concern.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Irving?
I feel the same exact way, Mayor, because I too reached out to President Supervisor Hutchins, and she said that it's been discussed with her, but had not been taken to the board. It will not go to her board until the following meeting. I also know that I reached out to the school district as well. It's been discussed with members of the school district, but not the school board, who is on board with the hiring or even have that information. I think you're going to be meeting with them next month. Okay, so this will be their first hearing of that. And so it seems like before we, before we make a decision today on anything that we need to have the discussion with the school board, because they're the ones who's going to make the decision as to whether or not they were going to interlocal agreement. It would also be the entire Adams County Supervisor Board that would make it and not Supervisor Hutchins. And the same way here, we have not had any discussion. I had five minutes on, or 10 minutes on the phone with you yesterday. Prior to that, it's been no knowledge and no discussion. I am aware of the situation that when our Lieutenant Governor, Debra Housman, came and spoke with us, he was putting an emphasis on, and I agree with all of that. But what I disagree with is the process, how it's being carried out. Oftentimes, we are given information on this spur of the moment. In your interview yesterday, you called me yesterday to inform me about the packet that we had received. Well, that doesn't give the, me, in all fairness to me, the opportunity to absorb the information, to do my own investigation, in which we should. That is something we should be afforded to have. So with that being said, I cannot honestly vote on anything today until we know all of those boards are on board with that. I understand the vision. I do, and I'm all in. I think she's a great candidate. I think all of that. But that's not for this board alone to decide on.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Alderwoman Smith is next, and then I'll recognize. Alderwoman Irving?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, because oftentimes, that's not done either. They just intervene. And if we adopted Robert Rules of Order, then each board member should respectfully allow me to finish my conversation.
You still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And so again, I disagree. I just think we need to, at this time, a good idea, but let's all be on board the same accord. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderwoman Smith, and then Alderwoman Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that the motion was to have the city attorney move forward with the process, which means reaching out to the county, reaching out to the Board of Supervisors, meetings will be done. That's the process of moving forward with an interlocal agreement. That's all I wanted to clarify. This isn't a done deal by any means. This is the beginning of a great process. That is the most exciting thing, that one of the most exciting things I've heard in a while. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Hall?
That's what I was going to elaborate on, Mr. Mayor, as in every interlocal agreement we have engaged in, we've, either we have taken the initial step, or the Board of Supervisors, or the school board, to take the initial step in seeking an interlocal agreement. That's what this process is today. Call for the question.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Alderman Dillard has his hand up. Alderman Dillard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the call for the question gets ahead of me.
Right. They don't want to listen.
I agree with all the discussion, and I think that I want to make clear that if this motion passes, in no way does it obligate the city to a hiring, nor does it obligate the city to commitment of funds that have yet to be received. Mr. Mayor, I enjoy your enthusiasm, but sometimes you get ahead of your skis. A lot of the times, you end up flat on your face. We have, in the past, this city have been at ribbon cuttings for biorefineries. We were all excited, and we got the governor down here, and we got the ribbons cut, and we all got pats on the back. Well, it never happened. So I don't, I don't want to be a wet blanket. I don't infer anything because I'm encouraged by it. But with experience becomes maturity and reservation until I can actually see what we believe to be true actually is in the process of becoming that. So with that said, I will support the engagement, the initiation of this process. Nothing more.
Thank you, Alderman. I would like to state again, no, we are not asking anyone to obligate anything at this moment, other than to enter discussions. And that's why we're having this discussion today. Everything has to have a starting point. Today is the starting point. And I'm sorry if there are those who would like to just hang out a little while and see where this goes. May I tell you, we do that, we will be left behind. We have to keep pace with this economy and with what's happening. Today is a starting point. Alderwoman?
I think one more thing needs to be clarified, that workforce development is not workforce only for a light fuel company. It is workforce for hospitality, for movie, film. There are so many entities that we wanted to make sure, lots of different manufacturing jobs. This is no way something that has only to do with the hope that we get this.
And this interlocal agreement, I want to make sure is clear, this is only for Phase One. This is only for Phase One, and that is the hiring of a director. Nothing else but the hiring of a director. And in fact, for the purpose of minutes, we need to clarify that. There are a lot of discussions that take place before we start committing a million dollars in. dollars each. We've got to build this plan, and we've got to do it pretty quickly because the spring session will be here before you know it, and this will be legislature. But right now, it's just for us to have discussions toward entering an interlocal agreement for the hiring of a director of workforce development. I think it's important. Is that, uh, proper that that would be the, the statement of your motion, Alderwoman Smith?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Because we don't want to get too far ahead. We're just talking about that first phase being the director. Alderwoman Hall, you've seconded it.
Yes, I did.
That is, I'd wanted to clarify the wording of that motion. Uh, this is for the purpose of hiring a director of workforce development to guide us forward in this process.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Frazier?
Yes, uh, as I stated earlier, uh, it's the process, I, like, I'm not against, I'm not against workforce, anything like that. As you stated earlier, Miss, and I'm not against Ms. Williams neither, but you're going to bring Ms. Williams up here, and this is, as you just stated, this is for the purpose of hiring a director. What are we, we're, as you said, we're getting ahead, what are we going to hire a director or not, and we don't, we don't even know if we're going to get the, the county to sit on the board. So, I think we should do this as a, as a later date if we're going to hire her.
And that will be done when we approve the interlocal agreement, but we have to start a discussion somewhere.
Yes, and on the other hand, uh, my personal, my, my, this is just my personal, I just want the public to know, this is the mayor appointing. He's, he want to appoint her. I, that's his appointment. But my personal thing is, I think that everyone in the community, somebody, other peoples in the community should have an opportunity too, because it would look bad to say, hell, if we just said, we're just going to appoint her and no one else is considered. And I say it's nothing against Ms. Williams, but we have other peoples in the community who can do the same exact job. That's just my opinion.
All right. The motion is just to move forward with discussions. I will call for the question.
Called.
Um, I'm sorry, um, well, we'll continue. Alderman Dillard and then Alderwoman Irving.
I think, uh, with your clarification, I don't say that it is me restating the motion, but I think that there needs to be clarification from me on the part one. We're saying we, we're saying not only the city but the county and the school district and any other partners involved in this, is this not the city's decision to make this hiring?
That's right. Then that was expressly indicated by Alderwoman Smith when she made the motion. She mentioned the three entities, and we'll restate it, the City of Natchez, the Board of Supervisors, and the school district. All right? Alderwoman Irving, you had something further?
I was going to state the same exact thing.
All right, we'll call for the question.
Called.
Question has been called. Uh, we will proceed to a vote. Uh, we're going to take this as a roll call vote. Alderwoman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Nay.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Nay.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Let this go down as a historic moment. We had a starting point. We will now begin discussions toward an interlocal agreement for job training for the City of Natchez and Adams County, and I'm excited. Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, Alderman Frazier?
We're going to have a, uh, as you said, we're going to have a, a discussion, uh, so are the all board of office going to be involved in this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Of course.
Let that be known, that we're going to, everyone going to participate in this.
Thank you.
Not just some of us.
Thank you. Alderwoman Irving?
I just want to ask too, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that, um, we would allocate $1 million from our American Rescue Plan. And so, it, it, and I'm just asking, in that, what was stated?
That is my strategy that I shared, yes.
Okay.
And we, uh, that is, uh, to be determined later. Right now, that motion that we just discussed had to do with an interlocal agreement for that first step.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, so I just want to share this too. There are many neighborhoods that, and we know that that water has been allocated for water and sewer. There are many neighborhoods that have crumbling streets that need to be repaired due to water and, and, and that has impacted those areas.
Yeah.
I just want to say that we, and that's why it's so important that the board meet, come together so we can have those discussions. And it should be community involved as well as to how we spend those dollars, because this is our tax dollars.
Yeah.
That are being spent, and we want to be considered, and not just saying we're going to allocate a million dollars. And I'm on board with workforce development. However, there are so many other things, and when I hear you say for 20 years, and I'm thinking about the neighborhoods and the streets that need to be repaired, because for years, they have not been repaired. We have not been able to overlay, we have not been able to address the water with coverts and those kinds of things that need to be addressed.
Yeah.
So, we need to really horn in and do an assessment.
Okay.
Of those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Alderwoman. At this time, we have some members of our police department here, and in interest of time, we're going to go ahead and move that up, uh, presentation of awards, because they've got to get back to work. We also have a proclamation for Constitution Week, and we're going to take care of that also. Uh, we're going to, right now, ask, I'm going to ask for Cal Green, Jerry Lee Ford, Benjamin Steele Hewitt, and Justin Jones come forward along with our chief.
Um, always work. I want to, I want to say something. Uh, when we, uh, when we brought Chief Daughtry on to be our police chief, one thing that we were excited was his passion for getting more training for our officers. He has been doing just that, and it's exciting to report that we've had several officers complete now, a Federal Bureau of Investigation class, with a 40-hour program, the Mississippi Law Enforcement Command College, and they have now passed out and received that, uh, very, very distinctive designation. And so, we want to present these awards to Cal Green, Jerry Ford. We have one here for also Justin Jones. And I just want to say, uh, thank you for your dedication to doing this and for furthering your knowledge, your expertise, and we're excited. And Chief, thank you for your vision and caring for it. Would you like to say a few words?
Please. This training is, is a thank nomination for leadership. We want to make sure that even our frontline supervisors, the sergeants and above, this training as well is put on by the FBI as well as the Mississippi Teacher Association, and we're looking forward to get more leadership training.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask Alderwoman Sarah Carter-Smith to join us, being that she is chairwoman of our police committee, and if you would, to stand here with us, Alderwoman, we appreciate that. We just thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
And y'all. You know, we also, I'm going to ask if we could, Susan, if you would like to please join me here. We have with us Susan.
Kasan.
Say your last name.
Kasan.
I always mispronounce it. I want to say Kasan, and I know that's not right, Kasan. Um, Susan is here on behalf of, uh, those patriots in our community who don't want it overlooked, that this is Constitution Week. And so, today, we have a proclamation, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited, limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Danem Gibson, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Natchez, and on behalf of our City Board of Aldermen, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this garden of our liberties. Thank you, Susan, for bringing this to our attention, and we celebrate with you Constitution Week, and with all lovers of freedom. And may I say, it was so eloquently said when they had that first Constitutional Convention. And there was a lot of, that I'll never forget, there in Philadelphia at Independence Hall, when Ben Franklin pointed to a depiction of the sun, and he proclaimed that in that depiction, he saw not a setting sun, but a rising sun. Our freedoms are not perfect, but because of our freedoms, we work on a more perfect union each and every day. The sun truly is still rising over our country, and we celebrate with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
God bless you. All right, thank you. And now, we'll get to the minutes. I thank everyone for your indulgence. We have a lot of people to get in and out today. Next item, we will have approval of minutes. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Our board asked you to consider approving the minutes for the special car board meeting held July the 30th, 2021. So moved. Second.
What is the pleasure of the board? Any discussion on that motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alder, Alderman Dillard?
Um, I'm trying to remember, was, was Mr. Tim Cotton present at that meeting?
No, he's not.
So, I, I think that's where it's under welcome, uh, visitors. I, I don't know of any others, but I, I know, uh, because I've kind of been looking forward to speaking with Mr. Cotton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let us have the minutes corrected. Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
Thank you, Mayor. And it's in my report. It's with partner with United Mississippi Organization. That's an error there in my, in the minutes.
Okay.
And I can give this to the mayor, show her, I mean, to the city clerk.
All right.
Show her the error to be corrected.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
In response to Alderman Dillard, the, um, the minutes are correct. Mr. Cotton was not here, so that they were postponing to another date for him. It's correct, it's already corrected.
Okay, so it, it, right there at the end of it, it shows that it is postponed.
Oh, okay, thank you for that clarification, all right.
It says presentation by Mr. Cotton, uh, but, but I do see the postponement to it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Further discussion? We'll call for the question.
Called. Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion?
Aye.
Any against? The motion passes. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Uh, I ask the board to consider approving the regular minutes of August 24th, 2021 board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Smith, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I've already spoken to the city clerk about a correction, and she's already made those corrections for the minutes.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
We'll call for the question.
Question?
Second.
Has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will move to other city business. Mr. Tony Moon, we're glad to see you today.
Yes.
And thank you for being here.
Thank y'all, uh, and good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Board. Uh, I have before you today the request and approval of the six-month general bids, uh, this is for the street striping, street cut patching, uh, hot mixed asphalt, and then lay down of hot mixed asphalt.
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we have approved the six-month.
Well, I had recognized Mr. Frazier, so Alderman Frazier's made the motion, and the second is by Alderwoman Irving.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We will call for the question.
Called. Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, thank y'all.
Mr. Moon?
Mr. Moon, that was great. Alderman Frazier?
I want to thank you and your department on what you do for the city of Natchez, and thank you. You're doing an excellent job over there at the waterworks company, and especially with your employee, keeping them happy and everything, so I want to thank you for that.
Well, we appreciate it, and y'all's support goes a long way, it really, really does. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Next, we have Sarah Lindsay Lockhoff, who is here on behalf of the Young Professionals Chamber and the continuing program Live at Five.
Hello.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank y'all for giving me this opportunity to speak to y'all. Um, as y'all know, or hopefully, Live at Five is a free, family-friendly outdoor concert, which is on the Bandstand on the Bluff. Uh, in 2020, when this started, or actually in cooperation with other organizations and businesses, I was able to put on two series in, uh, 2020, one in the fall and then one in the spring. And, uh, it was during the height of the pandemic, so it, you know, we're outdoor, I mean, it's space, and, uh, the whole purpose of it is meant to support not only artists but also local community, and, you know, some economic, uh, you know, stimulation for our, our businesses. And, um, it also, I feel, highlights Natchez, not only is it a wonderful place to visit, but it's a wonderful place to live. And when I lived in other cities, and, you know, Live at Five's are very prevalent, uh, it just, it made living there so much better. So, I'm wanting to do that for Natchez again. And, uh, so since 2020, I have made some changes. Um, I have a new logo, which I'm really excited about. I feel like it's more with the, um, spirit of the event. And then also, I've made some changes in my sponsorships. I've added a Friday, so I do incur a few more expenses. And, uh, from the city, last year, y'all were a platinum sponsor. And I was hoping for that again. And, uh, and also, one of the ways that I've changed my sponsorships is I'm asking for a year commitment, because I'm going to be doing this in the fall, and then also in the spring. And also, I don't have to bother y'all again in the spring. Uh, so the, uh, platinum sponsorship is $3,000, and whatever commitment, uh, business would like to make, I'm leaving it up to them on how they would like to do it, whether it be, um, half of it in the fall, rest in the spring, you know, just whatever works out best.
And I think we have discussed, uh, Sarah Lindsay, I want first of all, just to say thank you. You do this with such talent, passion, you just give it your heart, and it has blessed a lot of people. Also, I want to thank you for this wonderful thing you've done to put together, understanding our balloon festival is that weekend of the 15th. You've actually moved that event and put a great group in, in rhythm for the 14th, and that will actually be a kickoff event that is free for the balloon festival weekend. And I think that will be the very first time we've ever had a free kickoff event for the balloon festival, and that's all thanks to you, and thank you for that. I want to give you a hand.
Oh, I think so.
I mean, in, in all the years of history, have we ever had a free kickoff event before the balloon weekend? Well, this is the first, so let's get ready to support it. Um, also, Sarah Lindsay, uh, you know, effective, our new budget year begins October 1. Uh, I don't see any reason that we wouldn't just give you that platinum sponsorship at once, but that is up to the board, and this time, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
It's so moved, for once, at once.
Okay.
Second.
The motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith for platinum sponsorship effective October of this year, and it has been seconded by Alderman Dillard. Alderwoman Irving, yes?
I'm not against that, you know, I'm all for it. I think you know wholeheartedly that I am. I do want to ask the city clerk a question. I do want to ask the city clerk a question, because looking at the budget and what we had left in our general fund, do we have that? I mean, will we be able to support the $3,000 from the budget? Looking at it here, if I'm looking incorrectly, then please speak to it and move on.
Ms. Irving, this is our coming budget, as you said. Are you looking at the same thing I'm looking at?
Okay. All right, so then I think this should be a discussion for the Board to make. I mean, I'm not against it, but do we have the funds now to do that?
Mr. Mayor, we could amend the motion to do the 1,500 now and 1,500.
Well, we can certainly do that.
That'd be fine.
We can certainly do that. I will say, though, we are, we are in a very good position. We are. And we also do have this budgeted in our sponsorships portion, but it's, as I said, up to the Board. If you'd like to do, would you like to change that motion? You do one in October and the other in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Dillard? The motion's been restated. Are you good as the person who seconded that motion?
I would like to make the comment, because I'm really very excited about this, and I thought all along that this was one of the things that we're missing. However, I would encourage you to bother us earlier in the process rather than later. I certainly think this would be, could easily fit in under community development or community promotion. There's all sorts of avenues that we can, we could put these expenditures on, but I'm just tickled to death, and I echo the Mayor's sentiment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So I assume your second still stands?
Yes.
All right. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a wonderful idea in what you're doing for the community, but this is, this is why, I would like to know, all these events that you have, do they cater to everyone in the community?
Yes.
The type, what type of music are they playing?
I'm so glad you asked. So may I pull out my little schedule?
Yes, please, ma'am.
Whenever I'm making my lineup, I'm very careful, and I try to make sure all genres are included. So Cha Cha Boo is more of a, like, classic rock than Galen Martin and the Crutches this past spring. I don't know if anybody attended the Pudbel Pickers. This is going to be more of a little bluegrass. Then we have In Rhythm, and Clint Boyd is, which, I mean, we all know In Rhythm, I mean, they are absolutely amazing. And then Clint Boyd is actually more gypsy jazz, which pretty excited about. And then actually, Sandu Jazz, which I'm tickled to death about, is a Latin jazz band. So I do try to be as, I do try to be very inclusive whenever I'm doing my lineup, so to make sure it's catered to everybody.
Yes, like I say, this is a good idea, but see, first, you had it on the bluffing. When people come down, they go, they'll come down. As you know, everyone come to the bluff, regardless of what color you are, who you are, they come to the bluff, they want to see. And the first thing, like I say, the Latin, and we have, we have a lot of people in this community that are Latinos and that. Then we have a lot of African Americans, so, so this is, this is all I'm just simply saying, is to cater to everyone, because, because we are a multicultural, uh, uh, community, and we like to reach out to everyone so everyone can be happy, can enjoy the bluff, and have a good time, and bring your family and friends.
Absolutely.
That's right.
So that was my only concern.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, yes. Yes, I support us giving 1,500, not the full $3,000 request, because we are nearing the end of our fiscal year.
1,500 and then 1,500. And I want to just state for clarity, this will not be paid until after October 1. It's not being paid out of our current budget, so just to make that clear. I do believe, though, the motion, just to clarify, is for a platinum sponsorship, 1,500 in the fall, 1,500 payable in the spring. Okay.
Call for the question.
Second.
Question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Sarah Lindsay. Thank you again. And everyone, please do, as Alderman Frazier said, turn out, come support it. The Department Director reports, Mr. Johnston, we're going to recognize you next, Community Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board.
Good afternoon.
I provided you in the draft my report with your packets this past Friday. There's only been one change to it, but that'll be at the end. That'll be after the line. Commerce Street Entertainment District upgrade, 2021 Transportation Alternatives Program, originally presented on 8/24 board meeting, MDOT is accepting applications for its Transportation Alternatives Program. Included in the Downtown Master Plan is the creation of an arch district on the 100 block of North Commerce Street between Main and Franklin. To assist in achieving this goal, staff included in this FY22 budget the necessary match to submit this application to provide the necessary ADA sidewalk and handicap improvements along with the installation of aesthetic lighting and, excuse me, and/or bollards to provide needed lighting to improve the protection and safety of pedestrians and motorists, as well as providing electricity for outdoor festivals and other events. All but one motion request was approved. The one that was not approved was the commitment for matching funds for this project of 134, 202 and 50 cents. Pleasure of the Board.
Okay. Do we have a motion? I want to just refresh the Board. You know, we, we budgeted for this this past year. However, because our audits were not current, we were not able to apply for the grant. I had a conversation with Commissioner of Transportation, Tom King, last week, assured him that we are going to have this audit done by the end of the month, working very hard. We understand Carr Hammond is in the very last stages of that, and he has assured me he'll be bringing that to us on the 28th. I told Commissioner King we'll be hand-delivering that audit, and he is excited that we are interested in this grant. What's exciting about this grant is that it will not only make just some great cosmetic improvements downtown in the area of Commerce Street, Franklin, and Main, but it will provide for renovations to the sidewalks in that vicinity that will open up handicap access, handicapped access to both sides of Commerce Street and that central block, and also to Main and to Franklin. And if you add it up, that's a total of 10, 10 city block fronts, if you add that up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. That's a very significant step forward in making ADA accessibility available downtown. This is a passion of mine, and I know it is of yours, because we have a number of people in our community and a number of tourists who come to our community who are challenged because of the height of our sidewalks. And here, with only 134,000 on the city's part, we're going to get all that done.
Mr. Mayor, I move the motion.
Okay. Okay. The motion has been made then to approve this by Alderwoman Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Any discussion on the motion? Alderman Dillard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's any question about the validity of the, of the proposed project, and certainly it is not anything that's not new to us, but what is a little disappointing is that it was not included in the Community Development's proposed budget for the year 2022.
It was, Mr. Dillard.
Is it in this budget?
Yes, sir, it is.
Under what?
It was presented to the Board back in July, so yes, sir, it was.
Is it under Fund 92?
I can't answer how it was placed in the budget. I have to defer that to Ms. Fortenberry.
Ms. Fortenberry, can you answer that for us?
On top of my head, ma'am, no, I can look at it and I'll get back with you, but not on top of my head, no.
I know it's in there.
Yeah. He gave us ours a question.
Well, I'm going to look through it again, but I've been through this more than several times, and I didn't see.
I'm not disputing, you know, that, but it was presented, and in my discussions, I mean, it was supposed to be in there, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I even had a conversation.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard. Thank you. And obviously, if we have some questions, we can answer those offline, and we can come back in the next meeting and clarify if we need to. Alderwoman Irving?
Okay. I, I'm not against it.
Yeah.
However, I see in our budget that we have allocated the $50,000, $50,000 request for the Downtown Master Plan. That's in our budget. So I'm thinking, why not allow them, that organization, to hire the director, and they go in the direction, that would be one of the responsibilities of that new person to do. That would be one of their obligations or improvements that they can make, because that would be a part of her job description, to partner with the downtown businesses and that sort of thing. I think we just kind of.
I could, if I could clarify, this is a TAP grant, and the deadline for making this application is September 31st, this month.
I thought it was the 24th.
And it is also, only the city can enter into a grant application with the Mississippi Department of Transportation, just as it works with our Transit Authority. All MDOT grants have to flow through the city and not another organization. So just for clarity.
That is correct. Yes, sir. I mean, and we do, you know, we just had the LPA training recently, Mr. Ballard and myself, and I'll be submitting it probably, you know, sometime next week. It's the new format, as opposed to being mailed in, being done online. So, but I mean, it will be, you know, submitted, and yes, sir, I mean, we are the applicant, yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Call for the question. Second.
Okay, the question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye.
We got you, Alderman Davis. Thank you. Movements carry, motion, the ayes carry, the motion passes. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Johnston.
Downtown Natchez Farmers Market Staff is requesting a motion to renew Mr. Burke's professional services contract effective October 1st to September 30th to 22 and annual salary of $18,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith to approve, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion?
When discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston, is this downtown farmers market, is it participating in some sort of grant program from either the Department of Agriculture or?
No, sir.
Federal agency, a state agency?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Bless you.
Bless you. Any further discussion?
Call for the question. Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnston.
Section 592 North Natchez Terrain is U.S. Corps of Engineers. There is an invoice on the docket from our contractor, W. B. Blanton Funds, that totals 288, 713 and 3 cents. Staff is requesting a motion to allow the city clerk to, to make an intra-fund loan to cover this pending invoice and the invoice of my consulting engineer that totals $5,000.
Motion made. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I mean, do I have a motion? Alderman Frazier makes the motion. Who's second?
I'd like to make a motion.
Seconded, I, I, I will recognize, I saw Alderwoman Hall's hand, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Hall has seconded the motion. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Dillard?
My understanding is you're asking for a $5,000 intra-fund loan?
No, sir.
What are you asking for?
I'm asking for the difference. We have a fund balance of 137 and some change we have to make up the difference.
What fund are you requesting the intra-fund loan be made from?
In speaking to the clerk, she says that she'd be able to, I'll use the word, cobble it together at this time, and then we'll be seeking reimbursement as well from the Corps of Engineers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard. Any other discussion?
Call for the question.
Second.
Question's been called. We'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
I do have one more item.
Yes, Mr. Johnston.
If you don't mind. 2021 EPA Bramble Assessment, Bramble Coalition Assessment Grant Award Number 02D07921. Very early this morning, the city received the awaited cooperative agreement with an effective date of 9/7/21, ending date of 9/30/24, and totaling $492,000. Staff is requesting a motion to accept the cooperative agreement, subject to the review and approval of Attorney Callaway.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, is there any matching requirements by the city?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll call for the question.
Call.
Second.
Second.
We will now proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston, if you would, just remain there while we have you. I have an item that is actually, I believe this is probably on the city attorney's report. I'd like to go ahead and take care of this while you are here and get that done. Watkins and Eager, as you know, is the law firm providing services to the city. They have provided recently our bond services for the Recreation Bond. They also are our lobbyists, and they, our lobbyist, Manning McPhillips, has been working very closely with us on the strategies for ARP funds, and we're soon going to start a series of meetings. We, you know, need to determine the future. We are looking to James Johnston to be our point person on behalf of the city in dealing with those ARP funds. He is a former city clerk, he's a former county administrator, and he's also been, and that was in Claiborne County, he, for a number of years, and he has also been an invaluable, just an invaluable asset to the city of Natchez for many years, his familiarity with the law, with numbers, with grants. And the ARP funds, it's very similar to a grant program. It really is very similar to a federal grant being made to the city, and there are a lot of legalities to it. It has been brought to us that it is advisable that we have an attorney on retainer to help in any questions regarding ARP funds. If we don't do everything by the book, a time could come where we would have to pay those funds back. And so an attorney, Brian Smith, who is with Watkins and Eager, has been recommended by Manning McPhillips. And Mr. Callaway, you have the engagement letter, I believe, and I'd like for us to go ahead and discuss this.
Mr. Mayor, if you please, the Board, this letter does authorize Watkins and Eager to come into this process as a consultant only. It is at an hourly rate, and we can terminate this agreement on 30 days' written notice. It's not like we will have these people in our office working eight hours a day, seven days a week, but this is a specialized area of law where we will need a consultant. The contract that we just discussed, what James just brought before the Board, he sent to my office this morning, and the first thing you do is there's a link to other rules and regulate, it's 26 pages of 26, of government bureaucracy. I mean, I've said it before and I'll say it again, if you find a lawyer that knows everything, get another lawyer. This is a specialized area of law, and these would be invaluable, because we do not want to run afoul of our reimbursements for our grant and have to pay those back, just like people are having to do with these PPP loans where they didn't follow the rules.
And the AARP funds do allow for this and pay for them, and scope of engagement is addressed in the letter, and it deals with compliance, various administration issues, obligations, and many municipalities across the country are taking this step to make sure they are protected. Alderman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I understand the need for it, and I agree with it, to make sure that we are doing this correctly, and I think it's 250 an hour. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that Mr. Johnson will please just give us a report as the meetings go along to how many hours, so that we know, because there have been times when it slipped up on us and we got a bill that added up to be something way more than the board was aware of. So, just keep us updated, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Diller.
I think along that same line, is there, is there any idea of what the total cost would be at $250 an hour? As we said, we get legal bills, $5,000 a month, we get, we have brat riders, we're looking at the police ride, we're going to have to pay for those. Is there, is there any idea of what the cap would cost? I didn't see it. I've scanned through here. Now, you may see it in here somewhere.
There is, there is not a cap. I would say the, you know, one reason that we're looking to Mr. Johnson to be our point person is he is already, he's already gained so much knowledge in this area. But, we can't leave him exposed without an expert to turn to. And if, and I think Alderman Smith, you made a good point, a monthly reporting would be good, and we can end this at any time if we see that it's proving to be too expensive, or we see that we have exhausted the questions and we know what we're doing, then we can move on from there.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any idea what the potential total cost would be?
No, sir, I do not.
Half a million dollars?
No, I would say, no. You know, I would say, you know, probably, you know, hopefully not to exceed, you know, $10,000 to $20,000, you know, top of our three-year period.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Hall.
I'd like to move that we engage Watkins and Eager P.L.L.C. for consulting on legal services related to our allocation, our meaning of the city of Natchez's allocation of funding from the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we still had discussions.
Yes, and we can, but it's proper to have the motion. Alderman Hall has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. I actually was allowing discussion without a motion.
I was trying to get my course again, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Irving.
Okay, I just want to say, you know, this is a lot of money being spent, $250 an hour. I did read through it, I understood it, but I just, we're already paying $90,000, well, $45,000 a year to our lobbyists. It's a lot of money going back out again every time, you know, we, and 90 combined with the county and city together. And here we are now paying $250,000 and, you know, I mean, $250 per hour to the, an attorney again, and just reaching out and speaking to other municipalities, just trying to get an idea, you know.
Yes.
They're doing it within their own-
Yes.
Municipality. They're not getting outside resources. I understand why. Mr. Johnson does a great job. I'm not against it.
Oh, I understand.
I just, again, want to reiterate what she just stated. Give us a monthly report so that we will know.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Any, Alderman Frazier, you had something, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
James, I'm in, I'm in support of what you're doing.
Absolutely.
But here's, here's, here's my concern. I just want the public to know, this is just me. I cannot with fair conscience vote on this, you know, with Watkins and Eager handling this. As I stated in the previous meeting, I'm not going to vote on this because Watkins and Eager was involved in a lawsuit whereby they represented Titan Tire against the city of Natchez. So, that is, that is why I can't see this in a fair, because I think it's a conflict of interest, me personally. But, that's why I cannot vote for this, Mr. Mayor, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Frazier. I'd like to point out, by the way, the city, yes, is paying $45,000 a year currently as our share of lobbying. And may I point out that we've had, in return for that, we've had close to a million brought to us for Forks of the Road. We've had close to $5 million brought to us now for improvements to the airport. We have had $1 million brought to us for the completion of the Bellwood levy, and that completion project is what was required to then get the losses to sign a $1 million deal with the county and allow the losses to go forward. They also have now secured the striping and installation of signage at Morgantown Road, and they are also on the verge of helping us get federal dollars for that, and we also now are working with them on a plan for federal funding for North Natchez drainage projects. So, I would say that $45,000 invested, that's a pretty good rate of return.
Amen.
And they are working really hard on our behalf. I also, as mayor, would feel a lot better signing things regarding to the, this historic distribution of federal funds throughout the country, knowing that I have legal expertise that's qualified in that area, because I don't know about y'all, but I don't want to be here and have to pay it back because we appropriated it in an incorrect manner. So, I see this as insurance.
Call for the questions, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. We will take this by roll call. Alderman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Nay.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Diller?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, that concludes your report.
Mayor.
We appreciate you. Yes, Ms. Ford.
I had one question for James. So, James, was your street, your own common street entertainment district also the Grandfather Arch District Improvement?
Yes.
Okay, so it is in the Fund 300, Mayor. It has a different name.
It's in the form, it's in Fund 300?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We thought so. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You know, we have a lot of moving parts in this city. I was, I was talking to someone this morning how, you know, sometimes it's not that fun watching the sausage get made, but it's the end result, Reverend Sanders, that tastes good, right? We'll move now, I'm going to ask for an order. We're going to move now to Mr. Ricardo Gianni for presentation on behalf of planning.
Good morning, afternoon, mayor and board.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, recently, I'll jump straight to it. Recently, this, my office received a total of four applications, but two were outside of the city limits, two were inside for new billboards within the city limits of Natchez. And just from my recollection, because I was employed, you know, working for the city at the time, in April 2016, the city put a moratorium on new billboards because there had been some properly permitted and they conformed with all the regulations, billboards erected, and it was a shock to the city. So, you know, to try to figure out, you know, where, where the city stands on billboards, there was a moratorium placed on it. Unfortunately, there was no time period placed on that moratorium, and I remember, you know, Sivia and I going back and forth like, okay, what's the legal, like, is there a default end period? Or, you know, we didn't know the answer to that of, you know, when that moratorium would end if there was no time period. But anyways, in my, I have this stated in my report, and my findings, in the opinion of staff, the increased prevalence of electronic billboards in larger cities offers a new pathway when looking at off-premise signs or billboards. It has been suggested in the past that future regulations could offer sign companies a ratio for replacement, meaning the removal of a number of static billboards when constructing a digital billboard. Another benefit of electronic billboards is that it can, it can feature emergency messaging, including evacuation routes, amber alerts, et cetera. Additionally, in the past, there's been issues with current sign enforcement relating to non-conforming and amortized signs. Planning staff recommends the city to extend its billboard moratorium until the city ordinance committee can revise the existing sign ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Smith?
I just wanted to say, I'm passionate about this. This is one thing I brought up in 16 because it had gotten to be awful how we look coming in and out of our city because there were just billboards coming up daily with no warning. So, I definitely want to extend our moratorium, but I love the idea of replacing three or four with one digital. I think that's something we should consider, and that's their recommendations. So, I guess I really just want to make the motion to move forward.
Motion has been made by Alderman Smith to move forward with Mr. Gianni's report and proposal. Alderman Hall has made the second. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I understand about the, but we need to, and as you say, some of the bill in town, but I, but my, my thing of it is, is that we need to move forward. Like you say, these electronic bill, these electronic billboards, those are the future. And so, we need to move forward. But, as you say, a certain section of town, we don't need them because they, they're going to be eyesore. And then, we have a problem with people say that the light shines on some of the electronic billboards and stuff. But we do need to, you say we got two applicants for the city?
Yeah, it's, it's one company, and I believe they have represented, representation here at this meeting today.
Do you have, do you know where they're going to station them at?
Yeah, one is going to be on MLK, kind of right across the street from that Family Dollar, and then the one is right at the next intersection by the, I think it's the JR's Food Mart or something. Yeah, right there.
I'm glad I asked that question.
The map is-
Yes, right here.
The map is there and also in the handout.
How big are those billboards going to be?
Let's see, 160 square feet, I believe. In our regulations, billboards that are 160 square feet large, they have to be spaced 500 feet apart. And, you know, this, these, these applications meet our current sign ordinance, but also our sign ordinance is almost older than I am.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Frazier still has the floor.
You say the other one's going to be on Martin Luther King and the other one on, that's Pilgrim Boulevard?
Correct.
That's a major highway.
Correct. Correct.
Now, I have a reservation about the one on Martin Luther King, simply because the resident in that neighborhood. And when you're coming down Martin Luther King, either way, if you head it north, I don't know how bright those lights going to be shining in the motorist's face coming up. But, I don't have a problem with the one on Pilgrim Boulevard. If it's, if we can place one there, that's fine. But, anyway, if like on Martin Luther King, I don't know, I have to have some kind of meeting or something with the peoples in the neighborhood down in there, because that is a residential neighborhood right down Martin Luther King and Pilgrim Boulevard. You know, you know, I won't, like I say, I don't think the peoples in that area have a, have a major problem. And plus, as you say, we can use that on Martin Luther King as an early warning system in case of emergency.
Absolutely.
Electronic. So, I don't have a problem with that. Go on, Alderman Smith.
Alderman Smith?
Thank you. I want to clarify for sure that my motion was to extend the moratorium. I do not, I'm not approving any billboards new or changed. I think they need to come to us on a case-by-case basis about where they're going to be replacing and where a new one would be going, because we're not adding any. That's, that's the way I want to extend the moratorium. And so, then, and that would give us an opportunity to go look and see, because it is, to just see it on a map doesn't do anything.
Right, right.
So, if we could have those applications on a case-by-case basis, if there are two now that give them to us, we'll all do our drive and whatever and consider them. But, to make, I don't want to make a decision on that.
And that adds to what you're saying, Mr. Frazier, as well, yeah.
Yes, but he's, we have a gentleman here. We have a gentleman here today.
They can talk about it.
We certainly can.
Mr. Mayor.
But for, to make sure we're understanding, so Alderman Smith, you are clarifying your motion that it is to extend the moratorium, but allow a case-by-case, allow a case-by-case consideration.
That wasn't the motion, though.
No, my motion was to extend the moratorium.
Extend the moratorium.
And I'll give a date. Let's go, this is 22, almost. We'll say till 25.
Till 2025.
Right.
Why would it extend it beyond our, our election?
Extend it to-
Till 24.
24?
Yeah.
All right, let's get the motion straight. Alderman Smith, restate your motion.
Yes, I'm just going to extend it to 25. They can undo it if they want.
Okay.
Yeah, but I-
All right, the motion is to extend it to 2025. Alderman Hall, you-
Yes, sir, I would like to agree with Mr. Gianni that the ordinance committee does need to meet with him so we can revise the existing sign ordinance.
Okay, and, and you do second, you continue to second this motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on the motion to extend the moratorium to 2025? Would there be a date in 2025?
Again, why would we extend it beyond a one-day-
Well, I can recognize you one at a time for discussion. Alderman, Alderman-
Yes, again.
I want, before I do, I want clarification. Is there a particular date in 2025?
Uh, Ms. January.
We need to clarify the date.
Not 2025, we may not-
January-
Okay, look, they're having a heart attack, Mr. Mayor. May I speak?
We can change the date to the last day of my dad gum term. That makes it easy. Let's just, I just need a date so we can continue with discussion of the motion. The motion doesn't need to be-
I would hate to be an Alderman that has to come back and figure that out the day after.
May of 2024, may of 20-
Alderman Smith made the motion. Alderman Smith, why don't we, you want to say, June 30th of 2024?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to do that because that is really not smart, because what could happen is a billboard company could come in and do something right when a new board is elected and doesn't know what they're doing. The new board will have the option to take this and throw it out the window. So, let's go ahead and get this to the date I said. It's 25.
And is there a particular date during 2025?
January.
January 1st of 2025. Okay, the motion's been clarified, made clear. Alderman Hall continues to second it. Boy, we're making a lot of sausage today. Alderman Irving, you are recognized.
Okay, so she stated that she wanted to extend it, but it's been a practice, Mr. Attorney Walter Brown stated, sitting here in our meetings, you don't ever extend something beyond your-
We have millions.
Election period, okay? You don't ever extend that. You don't ever put anything on a new board coming in. So, you don't want to extend that. That's just like a lease agreement, a contract. We don't ever want to extend it beyond our term. And that's the only thing that I was putting emphasis on here, keeping that in mind. That's all. Thank you.
All right, Alderman. I will say for clarification, however, this board has in the past voted on contracts that did go beyond that board's term. That has been done. Alderman Frazier?
As, as I stated earlier, on Pilgrim, like I say, on Pilgrim Boulevard in my ward there, this billboard is barely, when, I need to ask a gentleman a question. When do you plan on putting up a billboard?
Well, only when it's approved, of course.
Excuse me?
Only when, only when it's approved.
I'm sorry, could you rec-
Yes, my, my name's Paul Bastina. I work for Summit Locations. I'm with the billboard company.
All right.
We're based out of Dayton, Ohio.
Yes.
I live in Long Beach, Mississippi, so I handle the Mississippi State. We recently just opened Mississippi, so I moved down here like three, four months ago. And we looked at, we're looking at every city in the state of Mississippi. When we looked at the city, we didn't know there was a moratorium, because when you look online on the ordinance, it says it's legal. So, our research team found four locations. I signed four leases. And it's unfortunate because these leases, we are going to pay landowners. Landowners do make some money on this. They're going to make probably anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 per year. So, now I have to go back to them and tell them that we can't. And I understand that. The problem I see is you want to go to a cap and replace. The problem with the cap and replace is we have no billboards in the city. So, how can I replace a billboard when I don't have one? So, my hope was, is to bring a couple of these locations and get maybe one of them, okay? And if I can build one of them, you can always lift the moratorium and you can put the moratorium back on. I've done this for 22 years, and I've never seen a moratorium for five years. I've seen it for six months. I've seen it for a year. But, there's a freedom of speech involved in that, too, because you can put a moratorium on it, but it's kind of unfair for someone like ourselves. We're a smaller billboard company. We're only a 10-year-old company, a mom and pop, when we call ourselves. And all we're trying to do is build maybe just one and get our, get our nameplate in the city. The one thing that I would like to offer, as you mentioned, the lights, we won't even put lights on that billboard over on Martin Luther King if you didn't want to. We don't put all the lights on all of our billboards, just because of its cost-effective thing. What I could do is if you allowed us to build a billboard, I could put the city of Natchez up once or twice a year for free of charge for anything that you would like, voting, carnivals, or anything like that. And that's all we're trying to do. I'm not trying to come in here and put a ton of billboards up. I'd like to put one up, and that's it.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'm not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Alderman Frazier, you still have it?
Yes, I still have the floor.
And then Alderman Hall.
Yes, this is, and I appreciate-
Okay.
This is, this is, as Mr. Mayor, I just want to say this to the board. The reason why, I had this gentleman come up here, and I, me myself, I like to see an electronic billboard on Pilgrim Boulevard, because that is a well-travel highway. It's, it's viable to the peoples on the north side of the town to get information, any kind of information that we can get out to the public right there. We have, we have a large church there. We have stores and everything. And as I say, if we could take a survey on how many people travel that road and how many people stay in that area, you'd be surprised.
12,000. There's 12,000 cars.
A day?
Yeah. Then, that's pretty good.
That's pretty, yeah, that's pretty good. And as I said, that is, that is a means of communication with the public. And as, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a means of communication with, with the city can get involved in. Like you say, they donate something to the city and everything. But, I think it's well-needed. If you're going to put one, if the board can allow us, allow you to put one there, I would, I would very much appreciate it. And I think the peoples in my ward would appreciate it.
All right, we recognize Alderman Hall.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In all fairness, Alderman Smith, she was asked to give a date. She gave a date. But also, the ordinance committee will also meet to revise this ordinance, if needed.
All right.
Call for the question.
Second.
The question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. The vote is on extension of the moratorium on signs to January 1st, 2025. Just to make sure that's clear, we will take this by roll call. Alderman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Nay.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Nay.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
The eyes have it, motion carries. Um, I would invite you, Mr. Bastian, to continue communicating with, uh, Mr. Gianni, and, uh, and the Alderman will, uh, communicate as well and see what the future might hold. But as of now, they have voted to extend this moratorium.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Bastian, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gianni, does that conclude your report?
That's it.
All right, thank you so much. We will now call Mr. Edmund Perroll, Information Technology Department.
Morning, Mayor and Board. Um, our senior center has a need to not be notified whenever doors are open. I believe that they're considered a daycare center and is part of our, um, what we need to have done. I'm asking for permission from Mrs. Bartley to sign a contract for the installation and a one-year, uh, recurring charge, $25 per month for one year, uh, I mean, for five years, um, for this system to be installed. She has budgeted.
What is the pleasure of the board?
From Lou, second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion? We'll call for the question?
Call.
I'm sorry, Mr. Callaway?
Mr. Mayor and, and Board, I've reviewed the contract, there are some changes that need to be made, there, uh, most of them are cosmetic, like the party should be the Natchez Senior Center, and Ms. Bartley should sign the contract. There are provisions for indemnity, arbitration, and other provisions that we cannot agree to pursuant to state law, and have prepared an addendum. So if we may, uh, I, I think the motion should be amended to authorize Ms. Bartley to enter into this agreement with the changes the attorney recommend, and attach the addendum. And that is my comments for Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Callaway. Um, is that clear to everyone?
Yes.
All right, or do we have any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, Alderman Dillard?
Just looking through these claims, Doc, in fact, we have one from an AT, ADT Security Services for the senior center. Would not that system be applicable to the monitoring of whether the doors are opened or closed?
That's what's being installed.
Well, we already have a, we already have a, a claim for that, $3,350.
Right, and that check is not being sent out until y'all approve it.
Right, today.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Dillard. Uh, any further discussion?
Call for the question.
Call for the question, do I have a second?
Second.
We will proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Perroll. We will now come to city officials' reports, and in the interest of time and also respect for everyone's ability, I would like to state, restate what we have done in the past. Uh, when this is your time, it's your time, without interruption from others. And so Alderwoman Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank, um, Chief Arrington and Chief Daughtry. There were several firemen, young firemen and young police officers who were the honor guard and pallbearers for Francis Wallace's funeral this past Saturday. And that was an outstanding, um, job performance by them, and very reverent. So thank you all very much. Also, I, I, over the weekend, I received a, a call from a, a senior member of, of a career, a college and career readiness class at Natchez High. They've been talking with their instructor, they are interested in doing a community project, they would like to paint some of our recreation equipment. And I mentioned to Ms. Irving this morning that maybe they could, could do it at a small park, which would be Jack Weight Park. This is something for service hours for these young ladies and men in this college and career readiness class. And I will be speaking with some of the merchants in the area to donate paint and paint equipment for them to do this. And that, also, um, we do, we have allocated the $50,000 for the downtown Natchez Alliance, and I was in communication with a member from that, um, community, from that particular board, Ms. West, and it is allocated for that. So we will honor that.
Okay. Alderman, thank you so much. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Frazier, uh, gee, I'm, I'm having a number of calls in my ward about, still about the, uh, limb pickups. I said, people who, who have, who have piled limbs and stuff on, on the, uh, the curb and they haven't picked up. I had an elder gentleman calling me on Old Pond Road, uh, 201 Old Pond Road, about, he still have some limbs in his, in his yard that need to be picked up. I referred him to, uh, I, I didn't refer him, I called the, uh, City Barn and, and to make sure that they were still picking up, uh, these debris and stuff, limb stuff. According to, I think they have ceased, are, are, have they ceased picking up limbs?
Um, we did not receive a federal declaration, so therefore, we were not able to bring in our emergency vendor. Looks great. Um, so as of right now, we are still functioning under our existing ordinance that allows for debris pickup as long as it's no more than four feet in length, two inches in diameter, and three cubic yards.
Well, I, I'd hate to call the gentleman back, he's a gentleman.
And I, it is, it is my understanding that the county supervisors can assist with the larger amounts, um, on an as-needed basis. Uh, now that's what's been reported to me, Alderman Frazier, but we'll continue with your discussion.
I had to refer him, I referred him to the county, and like you say, he's, he's, uh, he's up in age, I mean, he's really up in age, he's not able to do anything, so I refer him to the county. Uh, James, uh, I have another, uh, something that is taking place. Uh, Ms. Sandra Elander is on Blueberry, I think it's 301 South Blueberry Drive, she's been contacting the City Barn about erosion behind her houses, and from what I can gather, uh, Justin is telling there's anything he can do, it's on private property. But from, from what she's telling me and from Alderman, the ex-Alderman Gray stating that there was once a, a dump site to be cleaned up, and now it done started rolling again up to her house. Could you check with Ms. Elander and, and see what's going on over there? Because like I say, she's constantly calling me and calling, and Justin Dollar, she's not getting any, any satisfaction from no one about, uh, that project. It's an old project that, that taken place years ago, as you say, now it done start caving in. So I need someone to look into that.
Give me that address again on.
301, I think it's 301, oh, uh, South Blueberry Drive. It's the last house on Blueberry Drive on, on the other end where I stayed. It's the last house down on the hill on the right-hand side that's sitting back off in there.
I'm familiar with it, thank you. We're looking at that.
Now, also, I would like to, uh, thank the, uh, the, each, uh, the city official, each and every city official. This is at, this has been an ongoing thing, and now it's about to come to a head. And, uh, and I just want to thank the city officials for staying on top of this, and, and I want to thank Dan, because he, he, he the money management, we finally going to get this, this project done. That's the Daisy Street Project. And now, now you need to go over there and look at it. Daisy Street is just like Marblestone, it's a place where, uh, it's a place where it's busy, look like you can buy, can buy some houses over there now and do something. But they did an excellent job on that Daisy Street Project. It was a project that took place over the years, and the board, this board stuck in there and kept getting money that was questions about this and that, but we did it. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a felt in the cap of the city to have a neighborhood that's coming back up. And now what we need to do, and we're working on it, we're trying to get some of this blighted property taken care of, so we're into doing that, and I just want to thank the city officials for doing that. Mr. Mayor, that is the end of my report.
Mr. Frazier, let's give a hand for that Daisy Street Project finally getting done in Marblestone, Marblestone as well, long time coming, and thank you for all of your work on that. And I, I think of Mr. Lee Nelson, who was so passionate about Daisy Street blighted properties. I want you to know, we are continuing, we continue to be in touch with his family and are coordinating a time to present that key to the city posthumously to him, but we have not been able to work out a date yet. They asked for a private presentation rather than coming to the board, so we're working with them on that. But I know Mr. Nelson would be very pleased to understand that Daisy Street has been completed. Uh, Alderwoman Smith?
Now report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Irving?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to begin with, um, reading this flyer, and thank you, Mr. Mayor for, and Mayor and Board of Aldermen for coming on board. We have, the Monteville Jubilee has partnered with the Board of Supervisors, the City of Natchez, Adams County School District, Emergency Management, um, and Mississippi United to have a community COVID vaccination event. That will be September the 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Macedonia Baptist Church, 33 Minor Street. We're asking all community members to enter from Dr. Martin Luther King Street onto Minor Street. Parking is available on-site. Um, also, um, vaccinations will be available for all children and adults, 12 or older. No pre-registration or cost required, okay? Um, for more information, contact 601-446-2443. Felicia Irving, thank you. I'll be giving a copy of this to the county and all of the departments, so that we can get this out and distribute in our community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming on board with this.
And please share that with me, so I can post it. We do encourage everyone to come out.
I will, thank you, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Neighborhood Watch Meeting. We will begin, I'm trying to get all those lined up for a monthly meeting again. Um, I want to say that on, in October, we'll begin having our first Neighborhood Watch meeting for Washington Street. However, um, it's coming. I've had a lot of our members in that community stated that they wanted to see them back again, and thanks to Ms. Bartley and others who will help get, um, our senior citizen building completed with the repairs, it will be open for those meetings to occur again. But I also have a Neighborhood Watch Meeting scheduled in the Monteville area on Tuesday, September 21st at 6:00 p.m. Special guest will be our Police Chief, Joseph Daughtry, and other members of the community. Mayor, I'm asking if you.
What day is that?
September 21st on a Tuesday, next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00.
Mm-hmm, Macedonia Baptist Church. Uh, Alderman, if you have the time to come by, please feel free to do so. Um, also, I want to, um, just state, Mayor, I haven't heard, had any conversation, uh, with our ARP money, our Concord Drainage Project. I would just like to say that we have a shovel-ready project that needs funding, and so this is a portion of what can be used. And all I'm asking, and I know community members are constantly calling and inquiring, when are we going to get started with the project? We.
We actually, um, you know, it's important that we look at all funding sources, and I think, as you know, we've had meetings with our lobbyists, our federal delegation, we had our federal delegation actually, uh, from Senator Wicker's office, uh, there on that site, just a month ago.
Oh, yeah, months ago, a couple of months.
And, uh, we had all of the delegation members, uh, staff members here just a couple weeks ago, and that was discussed. And, uh, we are about to be at the place at the end of the year to renew our contract with our lobbyists. We have asked them to make that a number-one priority. And that's not just Concord Drainage, but drainage issues all over Natchez.
Absolutely.
North Natchez, also in Rose Lawn, as Alderman Dillard has pointed out. And, uh, and, and one of the good news items for today is because we've gotten so much done this year with regards to forks of the road, the airport, the industrial park, Morgantown Road, which we're still working on. Uh, going forward, we now, we're working those priorities, and, uh, drainage is definitely a number-one. If we can get that funding through another route, and they think we can, it, it saves the ARP funds for other purposes.
And I just want to say, you know, this project is broken down in three phases, so it's not that $2.5 million total. It actually starts out with about $600,000, approximately $600,000 in that first phase, in that first phase. And that will help prolong, um, a better quality of life for the members that live in that community.
Yes.
That's what they would afford.
Okay.
Okay, um, that's all that I have. I have a few other things, but I want to address them as we vote on them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
And thank all of our department heads for all that you all do on a daily basis. You all are the pieces to the puzzle that make this city, um, continue to grow and thrive.
That's right.
Where our children can learn, laugh, develop, and grow for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Davis, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Alderman Dillard, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, not so much a report, but, um, some comments that I'd like to make. One, I want to thank the City Clerk's Office, Mrs. Sevilla Fortbury and Mrs. Avitris Dillon for their hard work in putting together this budget. Um, it is a multifaceted, a lot of moving parts in there, and for us to get it done in a timely manner, which is, this is one of the first, uh, fiscal years that, that we've been able to do that. Uh, I'd like to also say, Mr. Mayor, that, um, by no means is it perfect. I don't think there is such a thing as a perfect budget, but it's a plan going forward. And it is a plan, if we've talked about before, all good plans are apt to be changed. And in fact, it's encouraged that when conditions change, that you change the budget. I will say that I think this is a very ambitious budget, that the projections of the revenue streams are higher than they've been in any of the previous 10 years. And I think we have reasons to believe, uh, that our economy is growing. And I think with the help of this board and the mayor that's leading this board, I think those things are very real and possible. I will, uh, when we come to the adoption of the budget, I, Mr. Mayor, whether, uh, it's a amendment to the motion or a follow-up, uh, proposal, amend that this, this board consider, that we look at, uh, ways to ensure that we can be successful then. Uh, and in that, um, vein, I would encourage that we defer all expenditures and cost incurred for salary and, and hourly pay increases, and all major vehicle and equipment purchases and leases. I think what I'd like to say to the department heads is that they, they are in the budget, and when we have, when we're able to see that our budget is in place, that we can enact those, we will enact those. But for the last couple of years, this administration has been able to conduct itself without borrowing tax anticipation loans. That is a major milestone. And for us to be able to do all the things that we want to do and what's been included in this budget, we have to have the opportunity to review our financials as they are coming in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very well said, thank you. Alderman Dillard, I, I want to thank you for your stewardship and constantly assisting me and others, uh, in the budget process, uh, as our mayor pro tem, and also, uh, you know, and I, I do refer to you as our senior Alderman, you take that very seriously, and we appreciate your knowledge and giving of that knowledge and expertise so willingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Hall?
Yes, I left one item off my report, may I add?
Yes, I left one item off my report, may I add?
Yes, ma'am.
On September 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at our community center, Representative Angela Cockerham, the City of Natchez, and Dr. Carolyn Myers with Seas of Change Foundation will sponsor a rental assistance and utility assistance for residents in this area, all related to COVID-19.
That's a big deal, it really is, and we want to thank Representative Cockerham for working with our congressional delegation, and in specific, I believe Senator Cindy Hott Smith's office, and Senator Wicker's office-
Correct.
-and Congressman Guest. This is going to be a very good event for our community, and we need to make sure we get that information out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for reminding us of that. Well, that concludes the reports. We'll move now to the City Clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Would I actually consider approving the claim socket?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, I did.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I just wanted to ask, and it could have been an oversight, but I did not see it. Okay, on the claim socket, I did not see payroll for the Board Attorney, the lobbyist, workman's comp, attorney, they're not included in the claim socket, but that's just an oversight or?
I'll ask-
And I've looked twice, I made sure, I looked through, I went through each page, and I'm like, okay, because they won't get paid this pay period? I mean, isn't that what we do? We pay the bills?
Madam-
I didn't see them-
Madam Clerk, would you like to answer that, perhaps?
I could, if the attorney actually could have called me before the meeting, I would have had points marked, so I don't have it paid back.
Perhaps that will be on the next claim socket.
It may be on, I'm just saying, I didn't know to right now. I can call over to the Council Pave Clerk and ask her.
Okay.
But if she didn't give me before right now, I'm not going to be able to go through the 86 pages until she is-
Yes, I know.
Let me call over to-
Okay, thank you. Yes, as we have said in the past, it's really good to have that information in advance of the meeting. It does help for the clerk to be able to have time to answer the question.
Well, I did it last night at Knoll Park, and she wouldn't have been able to tell me then.
That's fine, that's fine.
Just trying to be transparent.
We understand, we do. Further questions, discussion on the claim socket.
Call for the question?
Second.
The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
And yes, Alderwoman.
Okay, I just want to state for the board that I'm voting on everything with the exception of our in the-
Okay.
With the claim socket.
Okay.
And so that should be reflected in the minutes as well.
Let that be reflected in the minutes.
Thank you.
Alderman Irving has voted aye, with the exception of the fire. All others have voted aye. Any opposed to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes, the ayes have it. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Ask the board to consider approving the many docket?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderman Davis. He just has a little delay there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Call for the question?
Second.
Question's been called. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. May I consider, the board to consider approving the Mayor and Board of Alderman and City Clerk to attend the Mississippi Women's League 2021 Small Town Conference at Lake Terrence Convention Center in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, October the 26th through 27th, 2021, to include reimbursements of expenses incurred.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I share with Ms. Fortenberry that I will not be attending this conference at this time.
Okay.
We are trying to cut our costs, so I'm not, I will not be attending this conference.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? We will now call for the question.
Called.
Second?
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Yes, sir. May I consider, the board to consider approving the Chief Deputy Clerk, Mrs. Avitris Fortenberry, to attend a 2021 Fall Academy of Municipal Clerk Certification Training in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, and attend the 29th through October 1st, and to include reimbursement of expenses incurred, and this is part of their City Clerk Certification Program.
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Alderwoman Irving. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Dillard. Any discussion? We'll call for the question.
Called.
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay.
Next item.
Yes, sir. May I ask the board to consider approving the Deputy City Clerk Rebecca Turner to attend the 2021 Fall Academy for Municipal Clerk Certification Training in Ridge, Mississippi, November 3rd through the 5th, 2021, to include all reimbursements of expenses incurred.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? We'll call for the question.
Called.
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, we save the best for last.
Yes, relevant in the room. Ask the board to consider adopting an FY22 budget.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Dillard. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I do, I wanted to ask, and it hadn't been done. It's for appropriations, and I wanted to ask for an increase, and it's to be considered, and I wanted to have that discussion so that we could see an increase with our Natchez business and civic league, and to see, can we find it in other departments where we could possibly do an increase? And also, I don't see anything allocated for the Angeletti House. We said that we would put something in funding for it, and maybe, Mr. Mayor, we could look to see whether or not in public property, since it is public property, that we could look in that department to see. We didn't allocate anything, and they've been to our board on five or six occasions inquiring, and this is something that I just saw last night as well, just thoroughly looking at it.
Yes.
That we didn't allocate anything for it. When I looked at public properties, I think it's in 300, Fund 300, if you were looking, Mayor, and the City Clerk to see, could we? I'm not written in stone, but they said that, you know.
Well, let me, let me speak to that. We actually have had an architect look at the Angeletti House. We have not gotten that report to my knowledge yet.
Okay.
We're waiting on those figures, that's something that could be decided on later on. One thing that is in the budget, and I want to make sure we're real clear on this, we do have in the budget an allocation for a repainting and refurbishing of the exterior of NAIPAC. We also want that to occur in November, in October. We also have in the budget refurbishing of some other city buildings to include the City Council Chamber, some improvements that are needed at City Hall, and also to the VFW Building, and-
I want to see if Jody can maybe, Jody, do you recall all the buildings?
And Jody-
He submitted me stuff with several buildings.
Yes.
Do you recall, Jody? I don't have your list with you.
But Jody, I don't believe we have the Angeletti House on that list yet.
No, we have got more work to do.
We, we haven't gotten that report back. Alderwoman Irving, at any time, we can certainly consider that.
Okay.
We certainly can, once we get those numbers, and also, similar to what Alderman Dillard said earlier, we see how we're doing. In fact, of those projects I just mentioned, the only one that we're going to do right away is NAIPAC. The others, we're going to see how things go with the budget, just as we're doing with equipment, just as we're doing with anything else. Now, you did, though, ask something about the business and civic league.
Yeah, the Natchez business.
How much are they receiving now?
They receive $1,000, and that's to help with the event that they have, the annual event, and that's all they have. And so, they're needing funds to do workshops for small businesses, they don't have any other funds allocated.
If they would like to approach the board at some point in the future and make that request-
Okay.
I'm certain this board would be willing to consider it, just as we have other community groups-
Okay.
-who request assistance.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Dillard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, since we're in discussions about this, I had, in my time to speak, alluded to a motion. I would ask if the attorney could advise me, should I make this as amendment to the main motion of the adoption of the budget, or would this be something to do afterwards? I'm prepared either way, and I would move that the Board of Alderman for the City of Natchez defer all pay increases, both salaried and hourly, and all major vehicle and equipment purchases and/or leases to the second quarter of the year 2022.
You know, being that the motion has already been made to approve the budget, I would ask Alderwoman Hall if she would accept that as an amendment, additional wording in her motion to approve the budget.
If Mr. Dillard on my, Mayor, it could have been separate motion, because I send this to the county, it goes down.
Okay, we need that.
The motion goes down, my resolution.
All right, hold that motion until we then dispense with the current-
Thank you.
-motion, which is simply the approval of the budget.
I will.
Makes sense, thank you. Any further, call the question?
Yes.
Second.
All right, the question has been called. Before we go to a vote, though, I've got to say this. It is amazing that in this time we're in, we are looking at another balanced budget, not just the new budget we're approving today, but if you look, we are on tap to be in the black, over $900,000 on our current. We're doing really well. The City of Natchez is in good hands, and I echo what Alderman Dillard said a minute ago. I just want to say thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, also, Ms. Dillon. Yes?
And Mr. Collins, too.
We, we have, if he's listening-
Thank you, Wallace.
We have a fantastic consultant who works with us, Wallace Collins, and I don't think any of us would be having the success we're having, we're not for his advice, thank you. Now, the question has been called, we will now proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, board.
That's a great thing.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you, Jesus.
And-
Mr. Mayor?
And, yes, Alderwoman Hall?
I would like to state that I do agree with Alderman Dillard-
Yes.
Alderman Dillard about waiting until the second quarter-
Yes.
-as we did this past year.
Okay. Alderman Dillard, do you want to make that motion at this time?
I would, and I do, afford me a couple of minutes to preface this, is that in all municipalities, not just Natchez, not just Mississippi across state, your first quarter, your revenues are beginning to come in. You don't have them intact, and what you do know, your expenses are already going out. So you have to have some time to see how those revenues come. And the three main revenues that we're looking at in the city, in any cities, is you're going to be your avalorium, your sales, and then there's a revenue stream from franchise fees to leases and rentals and miscellaneous, things like that. And that's what makes up the budget. You've got your revenue and your expenses, and if we have this opportunity, we can see and to try to meet all the requests that are being made of our departments, to give us that opportunity. So I will restate the motion that I move that the City of Natchez, the Board of Alderman, defer all pay increases, both salaried and hourly, and defer all major vehicle and equipment purchase or leases to the second quarter of the fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dillard, seconded by Alderwoman Hall, and a third by Alderwoman Smith. Y'all were right there together. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
Dan, do you think we need to add a defer, just in case of emergency?
Well, in my thinking, if something happens between now and the second quarter, and there is an emergency, this board is perfectly empowered to act upon any emergency or any situations to amend, revise, and change. That is not only our authority, it's our responsibility.
Okay.
That goes to also with amending the budget. And I'll go on with that just for a second, is that we have rarely amended budgets, but you want to get through that first quarter, and in that second quarter, Madam City Clerk, we may look and see, and as I said, this is not perfect, there are things that I think should be in other places that are in, what I think are the wrong places. However, those can all occur. So yes, to answer your question, we can react to and address any instances that may come up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard, and very good question, Alderman Frazier, good point. Discussion, further discussion?
Call for the question?
Second.
The question's been called, we will now proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. I'm going to tell you that sausage is tasting better and better. We're getting there. One thing that can be said about this board and this city, you know, we all are passionate, and we, at the end of the day, we all are excited to see the city moving forward and excited to see this great financial news for our city. It will be really great on our next meeting, when we can make history, accepting the audit report, and I think for the first time ever, having completed three clean audits in one calendar year. That's amazing. The pressure's on, Silas Simmons, make sure we have that audit. All right, y'all, we have already discussed workforce education. I now want to discuss the animal control situation. We spent several hours yesterday with the Police Chief in my office, Mr. Richard Burke and my executive assistant, and reaching out to a number of people in our community who have been affected over the last few days by some loose vicious dogs. I want to also say, too, that my heart is just really sad for those individuals who have lost some beloved pets because of the situation. My heart is especially heavy today, too, because of the death of a horse-
Decade.
-that was, that was abused, and a felony animal abuse case that has occurred just this past week, right here in our own county. We have got to do better, we've got to make a priority of caring for our animals. We have, and we admit it, and I think everyone knows it, we have struggled to answer this need over the last few months, ever since Randy Myers retired, and it's been difficult finding someone. Not everyone wants this position, excuse me, wants this position, not everyone's qualified. You want to get the right person, because we definitely don't want to take a step backward. We have set as a goal having a new animal control officer in place by Friday. I know it's an ambitious goal, but we have been reaching out, we have been stepping up the advertisement for this position, and so we are hopeful we will have someone in place by Friday. The Chief of Police also has determined that the equipment that was being used by the former animal control officer was obsolete, was not in good repair, and we are purchasing new equipment. We also have made sure that the truck is running, is in good condition. We do think that at some time in the next year, we might need to look at a replacement vehicle, but in the meantime, we do have the vehicle. And so, to further address the situation, we have called a committee meeting right here in the City Council Chamber for this Friday at 3:00 p.m. to discuss the animal control officer position and this situation with anyone who has concerns. We would like for them to feel free to come and share those concerns. We're going to work through this together. Our goal is that we will have the best program that we've ever had, but we are building it, and we ask for everyone to be patient. In the meantime, we appeal, and I say this, I say this as someone who truly loves animals. I mean, I have a rescue golden retriever who sleeps with me every night, I can't seem to kick her out of the bed, she takes it over, Belle. I have a rescue golden rott named Roscoe who just turned 10 years old on July 4th. I have a rescue cat who bothers me every morning because I have to feed her. Take care of your animals, and if your animals are prone to be vicious or a threat, realize this important for their safety, to keep them enclosed in your home or in a fence, because if these animals pose a risk to other animals or individuals in our community, then our ordinance does allow the putting down of these animals, and we would hate to see that happen. And so, I think residents know who they are. If you have an animal that needs to be kept, obviously, we have a leash law anyway, but if you have an animal, or if you have knowledge of animals that are a threat to our community, let us know, and do not hesitate to call 911 if you feel like you see or are with- you feel like you see or are a witness to a vicious pack of dogs in our community, because we don't need that in Natchez. And ultimately, it's not just the safety of our pets, it's the safety of our children, our elderly citizens. It's a very important issue. Um, and so...
Minutes that meeting, Mr. Mayor?
And so, that meeting will be Friday at 3:00 P.M. here in the city council chamber, and all are invited. And, uh, in interest of time, we won't have further discussion now, but if you would like to discuss further, please come to our meeting on Friday.
What's the name of someone I tell you?
And, uh, this Friday is, uh, what is the date of this Friday?
No, no, I, I know the date.
3:00 P.M.
I'm asking how we communicate it out.
Oh, it's going to be, uh, we have already put it out on Facebook, and I think it's been shared on the webpage. We just need, you know, everyone to help get this out.
Definitely.
We'll have this meeting this Friday.
So I'll go to the Facebook page and get copy.
For anyone concerned.
Okay.
And our goal again is to have a person in place by then. Um, we spent a number of hours just afternoon on this topic. I just want everyone to know, and I appreciate the police chief. As soon as I called him, it was around two o'clock. He came right to the office, and he was there. And I want to thank the citizens who spoke to us and some emotional discussions, because, um, it, it is a tough situation. Um, the next item, this, I think, is a very simple matter moving forward, and we have the funds for this. Um, as you know, a couple of months ago, this board did go into a study along with the county for the airport. That study indicated that the City of Natchez, our zip code, has six hundred and two people on average per week flying somewhere. They track them by cell phone, and a lot of them are flying from New Orleans, but they have a three nine one two O zip code. Do you know that is three times the minimum threshold for getting commercial service here in Natchez?
Wow.
And so, now, we have been asked by the county, uh, and President Hutchins and I have discussed this just this morning, um, we have been asked to enter a phase two with the county and also with Natchez Adams County Airport. The total of this is right at twelve thousand. It'd be split three ways, um, which would be about four thousand, give or take a piece. And what this next study will do is it will then incorporate the entire Miss Loop area. I do need confirmation on that final figure from Richard Nelson. Um, I believe it's twelve thousand, but I would rather have that exact amount, and we'll reach out to him for clarity, clarification at the end of this meeting. Um, and I will text him in just a minute, or if someone could text President Hutchins for me. They are, uh, the airport is taking on some of the expense, the county, and then the city. Their expectation is after this study is done, we'll see that about a thousand people are traveling per week out of the Miss Loop region. That's five times what we need. And then, the lobbyists have been successful working through MDOT, and everyone at the federal level can't say enough for our friends, Congressman Gess, Senator Cindy Hyde-Smith, Senator Roger Wicker. They have gone to bat for us. We now have close to four point nine million coming our way for the full renovation of that runway. That, there's a meeting taking place tomorrow. Uh, Blaine has already been chosen through a bid process through the county as the provider of this service to have this project, and we are hopeful that Blaine will move this to the top of their list. It's a three-month project, and we would love to get that project done by the end of the year, so that then by early 2022, we can have commercial air service here in Natchez. We're talking about planes that could carry as many as thirty-five passengers, and we are already in talks with a number of airlines, working through a consultant brought on by the county, the airport commission and the airport. And, uh, so it's exciting. Uh, I will be attending a airport conference at the invitation of President Hutchins and the airport commission, uh, representing the city. So it will be President Hutchins on behalf of the county, myself, and Mr. Nelson, our airport director, and the consultant. And the purpose for that meeting in Baton Rouge in November is to, um, woo airline services and to bring them to Natchez. So with that said, I need a motion, uh, that would allow us to, uh, to share in the cost for phase two of the airport traffic study with Adams County and Natchez Adams County Airport. And, uh, if you'd like, we can get that motion at the end of the meeting, once we have the exact amount. I looked in the pack and realized we didn't have, I've been told it's, I believe, twelve thousand. But would y'all like for me to get clarity on that?
Absolutely.
You can make the motion pending.
Make the motion pending the final. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Uh, do we have any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
I think the, uh, first phase that we did with the county and the airport enabled us to get that federal funding for, for the renovation of that, um, runway.
Yes.
So this is an important project for us to be involved in.
I'm reaching out to Mr. Nelson right now, uh, and, uh, making sure, uh, but I believe our share will be four thousand. That's what it was on the last study, but we'll... Uh, any further discussion?
Call for the question.
For the question?
Second.
Has been called. Proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Uh, we have already had discussion of the debris from Hurricane Ida. Uh, Alderman Fraser brought that up, and I am glad that we have, uh, stated that because of the ordinance in the city, we are limited in what we can do. However, we are grateful the county resources are there, and we, um, and we hope the county will assist us in that.
May I say?
Yes.
Speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I had asked several of the residents to call out to the county, and they're saying that they're not picking up either. I mean, so...
Really?
They were told, yes, sir. So that was just last week. So I, I think we need to find some kind of resolution, because there are a lot of debris on our curb side. And no, they're not four feet long. They don't meet their criteria, but there's a lot, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Alderwoman Smith?
I think there might be a backlog, but I do, I've, I've been told they are picking up. It's just, it's, they're behind, because they can't do it today if somebody wants it, but they will help it. We are in the...
They were told when they called. Well, I'm just only going off what they shared with me, Mr. Mayor, because I did advise them, and they said when they called, reached out to the county department, they were told that they're not picking up.
Okay. We can get clarity on that.
Okay.
Uh, while we're still in our meeting, we have an executive session after this. We'll come back, and that does allow us time if we do want to take any action. I want to state for the record, we have to follow our ordinance when it comes to picking this debris up. Mr. Dollar has said that, that, you know, they will do whatever, uh, the city asks them to do, but it has to be done through legal means.
Right.
And not just because, hey, so-and-so's a friend, let's go get it. Um, all right. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll now, guess what? We are finished with the mayor's report. Those other items, we took care of early, so that's all good. We, uh, we do require an executive session today to discuss, uh, some personnel matters pertaining, uh, first to the community liaison position, and number two, pertaining to the, uh, police department, some personnel matters that have taken place there. Uh, is there anything else that needs to be discussed regarding the executive session? Those are the only two matters I know of.
No, uh, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, I think in the police department, one's a job performance and evaluation, and one's a job performance evaluation and discipline review, so.
Okay. We, we, we do this so that we, this is our open determination for going into an executive session. Yes, Alderwoman Smith?
Wanted to clarify with, um, the community liaison position, a meet and greet obviously can't happen back there. Is it something?
Yes, I do need to discuss a couple of things with you that are pertaining to a personnel matter there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything, any other questions? I will now then entertain a motion to, uh, recess the public meeting so that we can now go into executive session for the purposes that have been discussed.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderwoman Irving, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Are there any opposed to the motion? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now go to executive session. Thank you. All right, we are back. We are going to now entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session and return to regular session, and then I will make a report.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Uh, any opposed to the motion to adjourn the executive session and return to regular session? I hear no one objected, so we are now back in regular session. Uh, we had, uh, uh, some matters, the personnel ma- matters to discuss. Uh, one pertained, uh, uh, issues involving, uh, pay and, uh, the structure for the community liaison position. We're going to entertain a motion on that in just a minute. We had a general discussion on personnel matters involving the police department, uh, that involved, uh, the items we had mentioned earlier when we went to executive session. Uh, no action was taken. Uh, we did have one other item pertaining to a police, uh, matter that was discussed, and we will entertain a motion on that in just a moment. So that is our report. Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion, uh, to set the rate of pay for the community liaison position and for the new hire of Nifa Hardy at thirty-five thousand a year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, I'll call for the question.
Call.
Second.
We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, I will entertain a motion that we pay a certain amount to an employee.
Who's that?
Mr. Callaway.
Clear that up. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the motion I've been needing was pay employee three zero two nine seven three for eight days of work. He was not compensated for.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question.
Call. Second.
The question has been called. We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And I, uh, I heard, uh, Alderman Davis there. Uh, the ayes have it. Motion carries. The, uh, the next item, I wanted to clarify, we have received the word it is actually, uh, forty-five hundred, not four thousand, forty-five hundred will be the city's share on the airplane study, uh, slightly increased from the first study. This is a more thorough study. Uh, just wanted to clarify that for the minutes. Uh, is there anything else? Yes, Alderwoman Smith?
I clarified with the, uh, Board of Adams County Supervisor about the, you know, the pickup limit, and it is that they are behind. There is a list. It won't happen quickly, but it will eventually happen.
Okay.
So if I can get on the list if someone needs that.
Thank you, Alderwoman Smith. Alderwoman Hall?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the City of Natchez office twenty-twenty-one hire report.
All right. The, uh, motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Any discussion on the motion? We'll call for the question.
Call.
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Anything else that we need to discuss?
Ben can have the last motion.
Alderman Davis, would you make the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Any opposed to the motion? Feel free to enjoy a night at city council chamber. The rest of us are going home. Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Lane. Thank you, Dustin.